Good evening, everyone. Thank you guys for being here today. Today is February the first, two thousand and twenty-two. We're here for our work session today about zoning. Thank you, Ms. Judy, for putting all this together. We're gonna go ahead and now we're gonna open up with prayer. It's always an artist not on here, but we're gonna do it anyway. We're gonna open up with prayer. Commissioner Neves, you wanna pray for us?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Everyone bow their heads, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for the state and thank you for another opportunity to come together and do the county's business. We ask that you guide us with strength and wisdom and discernment. We ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Amen. I'll lead us with the pledge. Pledge and Legions, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and with justice for every deed as best is wrong. Ms. Judy, you wanna come on up? Thank you and your staff for working on this. I know you guys have been working hard. Send your hands.
Yes, sir. Thank you. It is, it is an undertaking any time that we do amendments or if we do work sessions because we have a lot of regular items that take our time as well. But this evening, the purpose of tonight's work session is I need to get an open dialogue with the commissioners for you to tell me what is it that you're expecting specifically for our residential density so then we can take that back and work them into amendments. I also want to make the board aware that we've had several requests for meetings with potential developers, with lots of property owners, our builders. Our public is ready to see Newton County adopt amendments and be able to move forward. I think that they have also requested to see if they might be able to get time in front of the board as well. So you hear from staff, you obviously hear a lot from your constituents, but I think that it's also fair to represent the other side of this process, which are our developers and our builders. So I do want to let you know that several have reached out and they have asked if they could be a part of the process. So tonight, we do have some agendas on the table over here. The PowerPoint presentation, if anyone wants a copy of it, they're welcome to email me for that, as well as some of the maps that we're gonna be going over this evening. Some of the maps, when you print them out, especially in a size that our copiers can print out, obviously you can't zoom in to the roads or so forth. So again, I have higher density maps or higher pixel maps in the office that if anyone wants a copy of. So tonight, let's start with the very first off the cuff. What is zoning? Our zoning is an exercise of our local government's police power. When a property is rezoned, it is a legislative act which is taken on by, for us, this Board of Commissioners. Zoning designations then define the use and development of a property. You have different kind of zoning districts. You have residential districts, which is what our focus this evening is gonna be about. You also have commercial and industrial districts. And then you have special districts, which may be a rezoning for a planned unit development or a community oriented residential development. And overlays are also special districts that are outside of just your base zoning. Again, for the purpose of tonight's work session, we're concentrating on residential allowances. Let's start with defining what our residential uses can be. If you are a single-family lot, for Newton County, that is defined as a single-family dwelling detached, which is a dwelling unit on an individual lot unattached to any other dwelling unit. That is what we have the most of in this county are single-family lots. We also, in our ordinance, allow for multifamily. Multifamily would be defined as attached dwellings. A dwelling that is separated from another dwelling by a common party wall or a party floor or ceiling. Attached dwellings include two-family townhouses, multifamily. It also could include, two-family are also known as duplexes. You have, some areas have triplexes, they have quadplexes. It also could include condominiums. So anything, any type of development that is either attached together in some way, either like apartments could be attached on the sides and above. Your townhouses are attached by a common wall between them. Duplexes and so forth would be attached by a common wall. So I went through our current residential zoning districts and I put it on this table. If you're zoned A, that's agricultural, that's a 10-acre minimum. That is our most restrictive as far as size of any of our zoning districts. Then the next zoning district, we have AR, which is agricultural residential, and it is a one-acre minimum. And we're not gonna get into watersheds just yet, but the base zoning says it's a one-acre minimum. You have rural estates, which is a two-acre minimum. You have R1, R2, and R3 that are triplets, more or less. There's not enough difference between each of the zoning designations that part of staff's proposal would be to combine them into one district because, again, there's just not that much difference. But right now, if you were zoned R1, R2, or R3, if you're on a septic lot, your minimum lot size would be 25,500 square feet or .58 of an acre, just a little better than half an acre. If you are on sewer, in R2, you could go down to .57. That's not a big difference, but if you're on sewer, you could go down to .57 of a lot. And if you're in R3, you could go down as small as .51, which is right at half an acre. We also have zonings that, we don't use these a lot. These were some of our zonings that we inherited from former ordinances, but we have what's called an MSR district. In that district, you find a lot of those down at Lake Jackson. You find a lot of them where sometimes abutting the cities, but on those, you could do, on septic, again, 25,500 square feet is the minimum lot size by the state for a septic tank, not by Newton County, but the state for a septic tank. But if you had sewer, you could potentially go down to a 15,000-square-foot lot or about .34 of an acre. If you are in DR, which is dual residential, single and two-family, again, your septic is 25,500 square feet or 25,500 square feet. And you could be as small in a, for a duplex lot, of 7,500 square feet per unit. So that would be 15,000 for a two-family unit there. RMF, which is our multifamily, which I think causes us the most concern at times because these need to go where our sewer is located. And a lot of our areas that have existing sewer also have some of our infrastructure concerns such as road network. Are the schools gonna be able to take in enough students? Do we have enough fire houses in the area to be able to get a good ISO rating? But on multifamily, the base ordinance would allow eight units per acre. And again, when you say eight units per acre, remember that apartments are going to be built up. So its footprint is not gonna take up, or its impervious surface will not take up a lot of a lot, but certainly the number of dwelling units would be a lot for a single acre. Then we also have a mobile home subdivision designation. Again, these are some that we have inherited. I don't know that we've done one zoning since I've been with the county from 2003 for a new mobile home subdivision or a mobile home park, but they are in our zoning ordinance and someone could potentially ask for it or they have existing zonings. So a mobile home subdivision means you can place a mobile home, but you own the land that your lot is owned. That's a subdivision. And that could, you have to have 10 acres overall for a new development, but each lot you carve out could be about 15,000 square feet. For a mobile home park, that means that someone could develop a park, but you're just renting the space. You don't own the land, you're just renting the space to park your mobile home there. And that, again, you need 15 acres for a new development, 12,000 square feet per unit. So vacant acreage zoned for res, oh, I'm sorry, let me go back because I did not touch on the overlays. So in the Almond overlay, I will say the Almond overlay, when it was created, allowed for the most density. When they did the exercise to go through and instill or adopt the Almond overlay in that particular area, you can have, in Tier One, which is single-family, you could have three to 3.5 units per acre or about a 12,446-square-foot lot. In Tier Two, which is the most intense, it allows for single-family, multifamily, townhomes at 10 units, 15 units, and 20 units an acre and points back to a different section in our zoning ordinance for these densities. That is something that staff definitely wants to look at. I think that our ordinance moving forward would be easier for the public to understand and for staff to be able to explain if we have all of these requirements for certain districts located within that specific zoning district instead of it being scattered in five or six different places in the ordinance. And staff and a developer just hopes that we've looked at every section that is applicable. The other thing, in Tier Three of the Almond overlay, oh, in Tier Two, while it does allow for the intense 10, 15, and 20 units an acre, it is primarily designed for mixed use or for commercial. It does allow for residential and that's what we tend to get the most requests for. In Tier Three, you could do 3.5 to five units per acre or potentially a lot size of about 8,712 square feet. If you do a mixed use, you could get 10 townhome units per acre or 20 multifamily or apartment units per acre. In the Salem overlay, your minimum lot size is 14,520 square feet. In Tier Two, the same minimum lot size. However, if you do standalone townhomes and you have the correct zoning, you could do up to three standalone townhomes. Or if you were doing it in mixed use, you could do up to seven townhomes per acre. If you're doing multifamily, you could do eight standalone with the proper zoning or 10 units with a mixed use. In Tier Three, again, the 14,520 square feet for single-family, three standalone townhomes with the right zoning, seven mixed use, or eight standalone multifamily with the right zoning or 12 in a mixed use. In the brick store overlay, the requirements for single-family point back to the underlying zoning. In Tier Two, single-family is not allowed. However, you could get four units of loft density and that requires a lot density for mixed use or it requires a cup for townhomes. In Tier Three of the brick store overlay, again, single-family is not allowed by right. You would get six units of loft density and it requires a cup if you're doing townhomes. What I would propose is to take each of our overlays and to make sure that each of them were applied across the board to the same restrictions and allowances. You do have in each of our overlays, there is the ability to have sewer. There's also research done in the past through the comp plans and so forth that has shown these areas to be primed for development. So again, we will be doing our comp plan throughout this year, but it's been identified for years that these areas are primed for development. So going over to our vacant acreage, and I did these by Commissioner districts. So this is gonna show you the vacant acreage that currently does not have some type of structure or home. Overall, in our A zoning, we have about 21,422 acres. That is a 10-acre minimum unless someone came forward for a rezoning. They could not get a smaller lot size than that. In AR, we have about 24,325 vacant acres. RE, we have about 194 vacant acres. And let me pause right there for a moment. The same as staff has suggested, taking R1, R2, and R3 to a single district, staff would propose to combine the AR and the RE into a single district because there's just not a lot of rural estates for it to be a standalone district and it probably makes more sense to go under AR. In R1, we have 481 vacant acres. In R2, we have 2,240 vacant acres. In R3, we have 345 vacant acres. In MSR, we have 225 vacant acres. In DR, which is that, like a duplex, a dual residency, we have seven available acres. There is no current available acres in RMF, which is multifamily. So if someone wanted to do multifamily and it wasn't in an overlay, and we'll talk about that in a minute, but if they wanted to do multifamily, there is no more available land currently zoned. So someone would have to bring a zoning petition before this board to establish a zoning district that would allow for apartments or multifamily. We have six available acres in the mobile home subdivision. And in our cords and PUDs, we have a total of 331 available acres. So overall, minus the 10-acre lots, we have about 28,156 available acres that could be potentially developed for residential. The next map is our Commissioner district and I know each of you sitting up here knows where your district is, but for the sake of the public, I kind of wanted them to have an idea. The large area that kind of slopes around the bottom is District One. Your area that is intense and purple with a lot of density is District Two. Your part that's going to run along your western property line, right along I-20 and north, is gonna be District Three. District Four is centralized with the City of Covington and the City of Oxford and a little bit of outlying there. And District Five does a very unique north of I-20 and then comes down to the central part of the county. And the next five maps are maps of vacant land. This is not vacant residential land. This is all the vacant land that's at least 20 acres or more. So this would be District One's available acreage that is at least 20 acres or more that does not show some type of structure on it. This is District Two's available acreage that does not show some type of structure including residential and non-residential. So some of this could be zone commercial. This is District Three. It was very unique to try to get this district onto one slide, but as you can see, the areas highlighted in that pink panther purple there is the areas that are 20 acres or more. District Four has a nice little slice of available acreage. And District Five has a good bit of available acreage as well. And again, these maps are available. If someone would like a copy, I can email it to them, but they were just too large to enhance better than here for you to follow the parcels themselves. So the next slide is showing our watershed map and our district commissioner map. A lot of times, there's questions about why are certain watersheds viewed differently than other watersheds? In every district except for District Two, there is one or more protected watersheds that go back and require, under our watershed ordinance, that two-acre minimum. I will say that the Cornish, City Pond and Cornish Creek are our drinking watersheds. Bear Creek is still being preserved at this time in case in the future if the county needed to have another watershed, I mean, another reservoir. I would say our drinking watersheds at all cost should be highly protected. We should have the less impervious surface in those areas. We should have very strict setbacks from where you can build close to the water's edge or a creek or anything that may feed into these water basins. So again, every district except District Two does have some part of a protected watershed or more than one watershed in its district. I flip back right to our residential map that we just, our chart that we just went over because, again, these are the vacant land that we have available. So staff would recommend leaving the A district alone. It's 10 acres, we'll leave it alone. We would also recommend that highlighted in the lighter green, AR and RE, we would recommend combining those districts. They're very similar, combining those districts. R1, R2, and R3 that are all in the yellow, we would recommend combining those three districts as well. And the other districts, we would suggest leaving alone. Going again back to our table that talked about our minimum lot size based on the zoning district itself, the base zoning. That is what I'm needing from you tonight, a little bit. If you're not ready tonight to give me feedback, I wanna open the door and say if you wanna come in individually and meet with staff. If you wanna come in and find out more information, maybe you have more questions. We just could not entertain more than two commissioners at one time, I believe, to not have a presence of a quorum. Is it three? Okay, so three. Again, and if you wanted to bring, we would just ask that you set up a meeting with us. We're happy to go over this in a more untimed environment because tonight will be timed. But again, looking at the districts, I would say what I would like to have is clear direction, certainly by the end of next week from this board, as to what do you think those minimum lot sizes should be? Now, I can't promise you that's what it'll end up being at the end of the day, but I need to take into consideration what your thoughts are for it. And then we go back and we apply all of the fair housing and all of the protected protections that are out there. And again, I want to remind you, you have developers and you have property owners that would like to also be able to have that conversation with you that may be looking to further develop their property. The Almond overlay, the Salem overlay, and the brick store overlay, I think is all three areas that need some, for residential purposes, some intense concentration. Again, I think it would be best to have those as close to each other. Now, there'll be certain uses that will be more appropriate along the interstate than they would be embedded down off of Salem Road. There may be different uses that may be more applicable toward a college town than might be in the Almond overlay. So again, but overall, for residential purposes, I would like for us to try to make those as close to each other so it makes it simpler for the public to understand and for staff to be able to explain and to justify why we have those specific zoning districts. So what do you envision for your district? Not just your district, what do you envision for the community as a whole? People have the right to develop. We also have the right to set guidelines and regulations. New development regulations that are outside of just a lot of a si, size of a lot, goodness, I said that backwards. New development regulations that aren't gonna be based just on the square foot of a lot is going to benefit our communities. Staff has proposals for homes for side and rear entry garages to potentially have in areas where you could have a smaller lot size. We think those need to be in small blocks and they need to maybe have alleys where you enter your home parking through an alley. That could potentially give us better design communities that people may be looking for. We also want to look at amenities. We wanna look at, we have a lot of vacant land, specifically in the southern part of our county, that has a lot of slopes in it. And anyone who may have been watching, well, when I watched the Burger King over here on 278 go up, they had to move a lot of dirt in order to pad that lot to be able to make that development happen. Anybody who may be going down Brown Bridge Road, there's a community, a new community, it is in the city, but it's right at the city and the county's jurisdictions there where, when the developer first went in, there were, again, a lot of hills and a lot of valleys and they have really built that up to be able to go in and place their community. What we have found in the county, specifically older developments, you'll have some changes in slope, potentially even up to 80 feet. And a lot of builders like to build a slab home. When you try to build a slab home on a lot that primarily is going downhill at a pretty steep slope, what you end up with is either a real steep driveway to get down to it or you end up with a flat house and no yard. You step off your back porch and you're literally tumbling down a hill. We believe that we should set minimum yard sizes for these lots. If a basement home is more appropriate to give that particular lot a better yard when it's over with, those are things that we're looking at trying to put into place. So we don't have houses where when we get our first little freeze or our first little snow here and everyone is scared to drive up or drive down into their driveway. So again, we're looking at it's gonna preserve more land. We're looking at allowing the developer potentially to go in and put their roads in, but not mass grading. And have more of the lot to be preserved and go in each lot and build. It is not custom build, but it would be custom to that lot. They wouldn't just go in and take down 30 acres and then just you've got houses lined up in a row. It would leave a lot more. It would leave a lot more of its natural environment there. Watersheds, we kind of touched on that earlier. Should all of the watersheds be treated the same? And I have certainly given you my honest opinion of our drinking watersheds, but I think that it may be time to go back and reevaluate the recreational watersheds of Yellow River and South River. You know, are we protecting them enough? Are we protecting them too much? The same way with the Alkovy River. Are we protecting it enough? We're part of these water basins that come from the north and continue on through the south, so our watersheds are extremely important. But we need to decide, is Lake Jackson an appropriate place? And I will tell you, if you asked any BZA member on our board, we have so many requests for variances at Lake Jackson, because we apply our riparian buffers across the board for 150 feet setback from the lake. A majority of your existing lakefront lots on Lake Jackson maybe only have 150 feet. So it requires them to continuously come through to ask for variances to further improve their lots. I would love for us to look at what our neighboring communities do that are getting these really nice redevelopments on their lots. I would like to see if maybe looking at amending the buffers for a recreational or a Georgia Power Lake might be important, while keeping the buffers at Lake Varner, which is our drinking water, is also extremely important. The overlays, did we create too dense of areas with our current infrastructure? Do overlays need a pause and a review for residential allowances? If so, would that include all types of single-family and multifamily or just multifamily housing? The minimum lot size should not be able to be reduced, and this is something that we found as well. We want to amend the ordinance where it would not allow someone in the overlays to apply an additional overlay, which is called a conservation. And the conservation overlays are smart development, it's smart growth. If you have a very large parcel that has a lot of challenged areas with wetlands and flood plain, so it allows you to bring your development tighter and conserve all of the area that needs to be protected. Well, this was not specified that you could not do this in the overlays, and we have had a few developments come in and apply both regulations and be able to drop that minimum lot size from like 14,000 down to about 7,000 square feet per lot. So again, that is a concern with how all of our overlays interact with each other and making sure we're applying all the standards fairly. So new residential building types, and then I'm going to open it up for y'all to give me some feedback. We're used to the regular single-family style home. We in this area enjoy all sorts of styles, from the colonial styles to the Victorian to the new age that has very trendy types of colors and bricks and patterns on them. But we're also getting a lot of requests for barn dominiums. And in our zoning ordinance right now, and I'm just throwing a scenario out, I am all in favor of barn dominiums. I think they have places that they fit well. But if you were in a platted subdivision, and all we could regulate in that subdivision is the square foot and a couple of other minimal standards, potentially someone could buy a lot in that subdivision and come in with this alternative type home. And again, most of the barn dominiums we've seen certainly are expensive homes, so I don't think using the word "it will depreciate values" is a fair statement. But I can say that it may not look similar to what was already there. It may not fit in to the neighborhood. Tiny houses, we've had a lot of requests for tiny houses. I need to get some feedback from y'all on your feelings on should we regulate? Should we allow? How should we regulate? Container houses, that was a big buzz a couple of years ago. I think that's kind of fallen off as more people have moved toward the barn dominium, which is a still structure that some people embellish and make very nice, some people leave them looking rather stark. Again, it's personal preference, but for us moving forward to try to get some continuity in our subdivisions, I think we have to address the housing types. And then there may be other types that I haven't thought of this evening. Again, just throwing out some questions and concerns and things that hit our office regularly. You know, I want to remind this board and as well as the public, if one person owned all of the vacant land in Newton County, you could probably get a single plan that was pretty meshed together. So Shayna sometimes refers to celebration in Florida. You know, a developer went in and certainly acquired a lot of land and built a very beautiful community. We do not have single landowners like that. What we have to do is create regulations and ordinances that is fair to both the existing community, that new owner who wants to come here, and we have lots of people who want to move here, and that owner of property who wants to either sell or develop themselves. We have to be fair across the board. But we have to set the regulations that help guide how that community is going to look. And I'll be honest, there are places that are very rural, near Mansfield and New Bern, that probably a more rules setting or more, the house types would be more applicable to there, the lot sizes would be more applicable. And then there are some that are very urbanized, and I always think of Silver Ridge. When they first came in, their landscaping plan was beautiful, absolutely beautiful. But after several owners bought in and become invested in the HOA, they decided palm trees were prettier at their entrance, and that's what they enjoyed. So again, we have, we're a melting pot. We have a lot of different thoughts and ideas, but at the end of the day, it's going to come down to what does this board want? What do you want to let staff know that you, this is a no give on this one, or this one I can be flexible on? We need you to help give us direction, because remember, zoning is legislative. So once we adopt this, our office is over there saying, we're doing what the Board of Commissioners have instructed us to do. So you have very important jobs. We appreciate all of your time and your input, but right now, we are truly seeking input and asking you to be open to hold conversations with both constituents, but also constituents or people that may be builders in our areas, real estate people in our area, developers, you know, that are interested in our area. Be open to both those sides of the conversation, so you make a educated decision on what is best for our community. So thank you for your time. Questions?
Thank you, Judy, and your team for putting this together. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Sanders?
Thank you, Judy, for this presentation. One of the things I suggest, I know you said have a meeting or a town hall with developers, but there needs to be a workshop, an open meeting, with the citizens of Newton being able to speak to you as well, and the commissioners telling you what they would like to see in their community, because they are the taxpayers, they're the ones that live in the community, we do as well. So they need to hear, you need to hear as well what they want. I'm getting a lot of feedback all the time, you know, in District Three. I'm going to get a feedback, they're going to tell me. Walkable and bikeable neighborhoods is what they want. There's so much density in District Three, all the homes are just thrown in in District Three. We are the community that probably has the eight homes on an acre. I can go outside and touch my neighbor if I stretch my arms out. So it's, we need to have a workable plan that's across the board for Newton County, not in certain districts, they can have a certain amount of acreage, and in certain districts, you get eight homes on an acre. So it needs to be fair across the border, even with the overlays. It needs to be fair across the border, because people in more of the capacity areas, the more intense areas, want to have an urban-type rural feel as well. They don't want to hear their neighbor next door playing their music, because the walls are so thin and we're so close to them. I can actually hear my neighbor every time he plays his beat machine. So nobody wants to have that in their homes. They want various things as well. Also, there needs to be a limitation of how many homes go into a subdivision. I can tell you from experience, there are almost 800 houses in my subdivision with one entrance, which is a hazard. It's an emergency situation. So we need to look at those issues as well, as well as public safety, because that's a huge issue. If we have a catastrophe, how are these people going to exit out of that subdivision without getting hurt? So we don't think about that when we build. So we need to put all those in place, as well as stipulations when developers build certain amount, stress certain amount of entrances. Got to have those entrances, various ways they can get in, they can get out of their homes. You can't have people stuck in their houses. That is a huge issue over in District Three. That needs to be corrected ASAP, a very huge issue. You were speaking on amenities. And I only can speak for my district, I can't speak for the other commissioners. We have subdivisions, and we have areas with no parks and recreation for our kids. District Three and Two have the most children. And I know in District Three, we have no amenities. I actually went around the entire district, took about five hours to go to every subdivision in District Three, and I think about five subdivisions had a park that was small enough just for their subdivision, and these children have nothing to do. So there should be some type of requirement that they have a certain amount of amenities for the children in that area, because a lot of our schools are overcrowded. We keep building development, but we haven't gotten with the school district to find out if we have enough spaces for our children to go to these schools, because they're overcrowded. So we need to look at all those various aspects to make sure that we put those things in place.
Yes, ma'am, I hear you loud and clear.
Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry I didn't get a chance to be here for the person, but I did able to watch the presentation on YouTube while I was on my way here. I noticed that you said that District Two is the only district that doesn't have protected watersheds. Is there any specific reason why District Two was the only district that doesn't have protected watersheds? And how does that affect the district?
Okay, well, let me maybe clarify that statement. Every district does have a watershed, and we do have protections to those watersheds. Just our South River, which is primarily District Two, and Yellow River were considered recreational watersheds, and therefore, there was not the additional stringent requirements that were on the other watersheds that were drinking body watersheds or so forth. And that specifically goes back to that two-acre minimum. In your, the more, the watersheds that have greater protection, we do have further restrictions on uses. So again, we adopted these in 2003. I had a conversation with the city of Covington, not just last week, in reference to City Pond watershed and making sure, because it's a drinking watershed, and making sure our developments were not going to exceed that 25% impervious surface. It was very important to them. Now, a good bit of City Pond falls in the city, but we do have areas up near the Mary Vale Assisted Living and some of our other developments that fall in there as well. So, and they were even pointing back to the requirement that when we adopted these watersheds, these are also based on EPD's regulations. So again, I was not here when the watersheds were originally adopted, but what I can gather from going back and reading information, it appears the recreational watersheds did not meet the same restrictions as the other watersheds that may feed into someone's reservoir or, or because maybe the watershed was found to be in need of further protection. But we can certainly look at that. But yes, sir, you have, you have a lot of streams and creeks in your area, too. And I will say that we do apply that 150-foot buffer that I was referring to earlier. We apply that to any perennial stream wherever it is in the county. Intermittent streams, we do a 35-foot setback. But again, our perennial streams that run year-long have a very large setback, and I think the question would be, do we need to look at maybe amending that 150-foot setback? And I'm not saying throw the baby out with the bathwater, but the state only requires 25-foot setbacks from this. So I think that there's certainly some negotiation that may get us better developments.
I wanted to ask, too, in addition to that, you talked about the two-acre lot minimums. So what is in District Two? Is there a set minimum? I don't believe there is, but I want to confirm if there is a set acre minimum in District Two.
So for District Two, it would primarily be the base zoning or what the overlay would allow, and I'm trying to see if you had any rural estates, which you do not. You do have in District Two 830 acres of vacant land zoned A, which is a 10-acre minimum. But you also have 1,720 acres of AR, which would be one acre on the base zoning as it stands right now. And then again, the overlays do allow for more intense development, but in return, it also requires more aesthetics and more requirements in that development. So as we look, we have to find a fair balance of what is fair to apply if we move out of those real small lot sizes.
Sure, and I would like to take you up on your offer and coming down, sitting with you one-on-one, having that conversation, to really kind of review the District Two as a whole, and how we can kind of strategically put together a plan when it comes to the recreation, the retail, the residential. I do have some constituents, I just had a meeting last week, that really want to incorporate some additional retail down off in the area of Brown Bridge and 212.
212 and 20, that area, yes, sir.
Yes, and 20 in that area. And so I had a conversation with them last week. We're even looking at how we can actually develop more in the retail in that area, so I kind of really want to sit down and have a one-on-one with you to kind of figure out how, from a strategic perspective, how that's going to look overall within the district.
Yes, sir.
So I definitely want to take you up on that offer. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Ms. C. Have we set up any meetings as far as the public, the property owners, some developers, and ones who, who, you know, who may have somewhat of a stake in it? It just, for me, and I say this time and time again, so it's nothing new. I said that I just don't believe that somebody who owns, say, 100 acres, 50 acres, and I don't even know how close to that, maybe a third of an acre, which my house sat on, having them paying, having them paying taxes for their properties, and then they say, well, you know, I don't, I want to sell it and maybe make more profit. And it seems like, from the opinion, from the folks that I've spoken with, say, y'all are just taking that away from us. So, you know, I look forward to the conversation, the meeting, and I believe we all can talk, very respectful, one at a time, one to another, about the people who own property, about the people who want to develop property, and we should hear them out. I mean, we just can't just close the door and say, this is what we believe. We want to hear, this is a... We want to hear, this is a community. We want to hear what all our peoples in our community have to say. And I think, well, I believe that the sooner we can set this meeting together, hear them out. And I understand we're going to vote the way we want to vote, probably going to say what you want to say. But it has to be a meeting between us and the people whom we represent. And so I guess this is to the chairman. Are we having, is there a meeting set up before we make this decision so that we can hear from the public?
No, sir. We actually got another work session that we are planning before we even attempt to make a decision. But Judy, I do have a question for you. Do you know what our neighboring counties, what are the minimum lot sizes? I guess, I guess that would be something that this board would need to know. That way, people won't say, hey, they won't let us do it in Rockdale, they won't let us do it in Morgan, we'll go to Newton. So can you kind of help us with that?
Yes, sir, we will make sure, we have had those numbers in the past and we'll make sure that we get an update. So any of the counties that actually touch us, we will make sure that we have their density allowances and their lot sizes.
If I could repeat my thought in, you know, we don't represent Rockdale, we don't represent Jackson County. We represent Newton County. And the reason why we are up here is because the citizens of Newton County chose to take out their time and vote for us and put us up here. And I, you know, and I, I believe we have to, have to listen to the people. I mean, I thought that's the reason why, oh, I'm going to put it my way. That's the reason for the season that we are up here because of the people. And when we can't take out time to listen, I think there's something very bad wrong.
Commissioner Sanders?
Just to add on just a little bit, what Commissioner Henderson was stating. I know you said that there was going to be another workshop. When is that workshop?
That will be the 15th, your next BSC meeting. We did ask for 6:00 PM if the board wanted to move that up another hour and maybe try to open up time for the public to be able to speak. That's at your pleasure.
I think the only thing with having a meeting at 5:00 is hard for citizens who are getting from work to attend. That's why we have our meetings at 6:00 or 7:00. So if it's vice versa, maybe our workshop is at 5:00 and the citizens at 6:00, that might, that might work.
And again, that's fine. Staff would be available on other evenings in that week as well. The next week, we would have planning commission meetings and BZA meetings. So it would be, would not be as, but any, any night of the week of the 14th through the 19th, I believe. And that's up to the board. You, y'all, y'all help us, I hope y'all.
Mr. Chairman, I think that would be an opportunity for the citizens to be able to voice their opinions or suggestions in a place where they live. So if we can make that and a request to have a meeting for the citizens to be able to speak, that would be great.
I think the request wasn't only for the citizens, if I'm not mistaken, it was for the developers as well.
All stakeholders, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. We greatly appreciate you and all the hard work that you put in this.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Guys, if there's nothing else, I seek a motion that we will adjourn. Thank you, sir. Second, it's a motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Edwards, all in favor. Thank you, stand adjourned.